I'm clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting, Tuesday, February 21st, 2017. The time is now 8:25. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 1st, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2nd, 2016, issues of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracco?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor, except for Commissioner Rogers. He's absent, excused.
We're gonna take the agenda a little bit out of order. First, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Tucci. Special presentations?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. Once again this year, it's my privilege and my honor, on behalf of this Board of Commissioners, to recognize our St. Patrick's Day Parade dignitaries for 2017. And I have a resolution that I'd like to offer on behalf of the Board. Whereas on Saturday, March 4th, 2017, the Nutley Irish American Association will hold its 39th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade to celebrate the legend and spirit of St. Patrick through a fun, good old-fashioned parade, and to promote an atmosphere of benevolence, friendship, and community spirit. And whereas St. Patrick's Day honors the cultural traditions of the Irish, but also the historic American commitment to embrace the multifaceted traditions of all immigrant people who have come to our shores, and whereas the Nutley Irish American Association celebrated its annual St. Patrick's Day Parade Grand Marshall Dinner on Friday, February 3rd, 2017, at Nanninas in the Park, and whereas this year's Grand Marshall is Frank Doxas, Deputy Grand Marshal Shane McCafferty, Member of the Year Colleen Nelson, Parade Queen Morgan Sin, and our Firefighter of the Year, Michael Budnick, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State in New Jersey, join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate our parade dignitaries as they are honored here tonight. I proudly move this resolution.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I also have, before we make, actually make this presentation and take a photo, I also have resolutions from the Legislative Delegation of the 28th Legislative District, which includes Senator Rice, Assemblyman Caputo, and Assemblywoman Tucker, who asked me to present these on their behalf. So if we could have our dignitaries please come forward.
Just like to congratulate all the parade awardees, and turn it over to Tom McHenry, President of Nutley Irish.
Well, Mayor Commissioners, Tom McHenry, President of Nutley Irish American Association. I just want to say thank you for all your support you give us every year. This parade wouldn't go on without yous. You know, we really want to thank you, and Assemblyman Ralph Caputo for all his dedication to our organization and the help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. We had a late starter to the agenda of Edison Avenue and Oakley Terrace. So I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Petracco.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Cazarelli from Belleville, will you please stand? Welcome.
Not yet.
Welcome to Nutley.
Come to the mic.
Come to the microphone.
One of those bashful politicians.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd just like to come to show my support for all the honorees, especially two of them happen to be from Belleville. So, of course, Belleville supports the parade and the Nutley Irish. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman.
Commissioner Petracco?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, first, let me apologize to everyone from Edison Avenue that we ran late in the back, but there is a lot of stuff that we're going through. Before we start about our parking situation, the two-hour parking, I think first, we're gonna have the chief come up, and this, give the Board of Commissioners a little history of what's been going on with our phone calls at the police department.
As the Director said, I've had a lot of residents inquiring about the two-hour parking limit in the area of the northwest, which would be Edison Avenue, Oakley Avenue. Originally, that was instituted with the Roche property, where we would get a lot of overflow from the complex parking on the side streets. So I believe, years back, with the consensus of residents in the area, streets were included into a two-hour parking zone. So now, since the property is closed, residents in the area are inquiring about the two-hour park and prohibition, and at this point, we're just looking at, you know, whether they want to continue it, and at this point, I've had some complaints that have been sent to me. I know that the Director has complaints sent to him, and it's a toss-up. There's still people that support it and don't support it. So, at this point, I guess we'll listen to, see what the people in the area still want, and we can take that into consideration and evaluate whether we want to continue two-hour parking on certain streets in the area.
Okay. Chief, maybe you want to come up here and sit in Commissioner Rogers' seat. We're gonna invite the neighbors from Edison, Oakley, come up. Please try to limit your remarks to three minutes, and please try not to be too redundant over what someone else may say. So, just come up and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gibbons, 65 Edison Avenue. I live on Edison Avenue. I'm here to address the parking on my street. In January, I got a ticket for violating the two-hour parking ordinance. Been parking on the street for years with no problem. I don't understand why this day, of all days, I get a ticket. I've been told by other neighbors that tickets have been issued to them as well. I'm here to propose that resident parking stickers be issued. Also been told that this proposal has been put forth in the past to no avail. My wife and I are both retired. I have a handicap that limits my being able to get in and out of my car easily. My wife has started a new career in the real estate, and our daughter, who's a college student, also works. We are all in and out of the house many times a day. With this ordinance in effect, we would have to shift cars every two hours. I can understand this being in effect when Roche was open, but as everybody knows, it has been closed for a number of years. When it does reopen, I think there's ample parking to accommodate their parking needs. Also understand this was put into effect to deter New York City bus commuters from parking on the street. With the use of resident stickers, this would be resolved. This ordinance even limits Saturday parking. I, like a number of neighbors, only have a single width driveway and multiple cars. Other cities and towns have a parking sticker program in effect. I understand it works very well. As far as implementing the cost of this program, some towns charge a small yearly fee for the decal. This will generate revenue in addition to parking, to ticketing cars without a sticker. This program might even be helpful in fighting crime. Like the night parking restrictions, a car without a parking permit would raise a red flag. The high taxes we pay, I feel we should be able to park on our street without the fear of being ticketed. Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else want to address the Board?
Hi. I'm Maria Cato from 81 Oakley Terrace. I also have been a resident for past 15 years, never had a parking ticket, and just beginning of February, dropped my husband off to work, parked in front of the house, came out, there was a ticket on there. Never got ticketed before. I also, the same thing, I'm a stay-at-home mom right now, so my driveway fits only two cars, one behind the other. I also have a college student, and it would be a complete inconvenience constantly having to move in and out of the driveway all day to accommodate a two-hour parking scenario. I also was a commuter into the city, so I did it, came home, parked my car, never had a problem. I originally came from Jersey City, so I know in Jersey City, they did the same thing, where you are a resident, you owned a house, you paid for a parking sticker, they went in the back of the car, and it worked very smooth, never had a problem. I think it needs to be something that is looked at, because we are right by La Roche. I don't know when things are gonna go back into operation again, but I don't think it's fair that the homeowner is the one that's getting ticketed. Whatever could be done, I think we definitely should look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna read a note from my mother, who has received about three tickets in the last year, year and a half or so, one very recently.
Could you just give us your name and address, please?
Yes. My name's Cory Ortega. I live at 35 Edison Avenue, and this is on behalf of my mother, Lorraine Schwalek. She writes, "I am a mother and grandmother. I travel from Pennsylvania to visit or babysit on occasion. Sometimes I park on Emily Ave, which runs perpendicular to my daughter's home. I have received four tickets over the course of a few years. The most recent one was for going over the two-hour time limit only by moment on Saturday, February 4th. Ironically, the due date for the citation happens to be today. I reluctantly mailed in my $29 fine for parking a half hour over the limit. My daughter and son-in-law each have a vehicle, and to avoid shuffling cars so they could get out, I parked on Emily Ave. They each have errands to run, and when there was room in the driveway, I went to move my vehicle back in the driveway and discovered a ticket on the windshield. To me, there seems to be no reason for the parking restrictions on the streets in this section of Nutley, and it is a nuisance to homeowners and guests, sometimes a costly one. Please consider amending or repealing this ordinance. Respectfully, Lorraine Schwalek." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the Board?
Anthony Verselli, 78 Edison Ave. I just want to mention, with the other parking programs, I know Richfield Park, almost the exact same Marshall Plan that you guys have, has the stickers in play. And what they do, what would work for them, is each registered home gets, I think it's two or three stickers per car, and they go to the police station, they use their registration number, and that goes to the sticker registration number, but they also get a visitor's pass. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the Board?
Hi, my name is Dana Mahana. I live at 76 Oakley Terrace. I, you know, I've been hearing so much about these parking tickets, and I've been warned, you know, gracefully by my neighbors, which is really nice. They've let us know, but I would like to, while I think the stickers are a really great idea, especially Oakley Terrace is a very empty street. There aren't many cars that pass through it, and, you know, we have Italian and Irish families, big families, we have them over every Sunday, and I'm kind of wondering, if we have these permits, you know, what is the solution when we have family over? What's the solution? In the summer, you know, our neighbors have a pool, they have family over. You know, we're used to that as neighbors, but how can we address, you know, the, how can we address, you know, the police officers taking care of this to understand that? You know, we do entertain, we do have people over, and visitors, you know, come from out of state. How can we, you know, address this on a larger scale? You know, if I'm gonna have, if I'm gonna have 20 people come over, how can I, you know, how can we address this issue of having and entertaining people for longer than two hours? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the Board on this issue?
Paul Radzewicz, 70 Edison Avenue. Is it possible if your officer comes to your car, scans your plate, they notice you live on Edison Avenue, would just not give you a ticket? That simple. Everything's electronic. We should be in the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the Board on this issue? Chief, Commissioner, anything you want to say?
I'll click in briefly. It's really a tough issue, and it's, as simple as it seems, it's not always that simple. When Mr. Gibbons first emailed me, and my assistant was telling me that, you know, he was trying to get ahold of me, I looked into the problem, and I actually went down to the police department, and I said to our chief, I'm like, "What in the world are we ticketing two-hour parking in that area for? You know, Roche is closed." And sure as God made apples, he had his radio on, and there was a call, I don't know if it was to Edison, but was it Edison? It was to the street, with somebody on Edison complaining about a car parked in front of their home for over two hours. So, that does happen. When we were in the back before, I talked to all the Commissioners and the Mayor about what could we do to resolve this problem? Because if we were to go to a sticker program, or some type of permit to change an ordinance, it would take the full vote, the full vote of the Board in order to do that. We kind of agreed, and talking to the chief, and I'll let you chime in here too, is that maybe the first step we should take before we rush into anything is to start rescinding the two-hour parking on these streets while there isn't an issue. So, we came up with, if you had over 51% of the residents on any given street that wanted the two-hour parking eliminated and lifted, we could do that. You know, we could get some of your input on that. Chief, do you want to join in about?
No. As the Director said, I would recommend to leave it up to the people that live on each individual street. If the consensus is that they don't want the prohibition from parking, then the Board could consider lifting it based on the consensus of each block. If the block does want the two-hour prohibition, then it would remain in those streets. And I believe that's, before my time of when they first enacted the bans in those areas of the Roche property, were based on what the people wanted, I believe.
And a consensus.
I believe they came to the Board with consensus on each street, asking for two-hour parking due to the overflow from the Roche property. So, it only makes sense to go back, you know, to ask the people again if they still want it, and on each street, if they do want it, leave it, and if they don't, you know, can consider rescinding each street that they no longer want it on. I think that would be the simplest resolution, and if it does become an issue when the property is redeveloped, the Board could reexamine it and take into consideration any new changes to the property.
So as I understand you, Chief, you're asking the residents to basically get a petition with 51% of the homeowners, friends, agreement with rescinding the two-hour parking, and take action on that?
Yes, yes.
I think the best thing to do, if you have a comment or some, to really come forward, because we really want to hear, you know, what you have to say about what some of our ideas are.
Paul Radzewicz, 70 Edison Avenue. That's the only solution, is to come up with a 51% vote to rescind the two-hour parking? I think that would be a mistake, because you're gonna open up a school, gonna have problems with commuters parking on the street, because there's a bus stop on High Street and on Kingsland. I think Brian's idea with the permits is the best solution. If not, come up with an electronic system. Scan the plate. This guy lives on, at 70 Edison Avenue. Why bother giving him a ticket? We're in the 21st century.
Chief, what do you think, you could stay there for one second. What do you think about scanning plates, and how would that work? How would it affect our police department?
Well, definitely would be, you know, would, of course, would add to our resources. Currently, the way the ordinance reads, even if the officer knows that the car belongs there, that's not in the ordinance, the car's still in violation.
Okay, so why can't you change the ordinance, instead of rescinding the two-hour parking entirely?
Well, again...
This will be at this again in a year or two, when...
Again, I would leave it up to see what the, what the people on the block, the consensus is. That's how it was enacted, so I would agree that, you know, as many people are complaining that want it, there's also people that are calling to say they don't, they don't want cars on the street. So we have to kind of come up with a way, and hear from everybody on the block to say, what is the consensus of the street want?
So if we come up with a 51% vote on getting resident permits, is that a viable solution? Or is that totally off the table?
I think that what the Board of Commissioners, we discussed in the back, and you guys could join in at any time, is that before we went to a permit parking situation, we'd rather try like a pilot program on that street, see how it works out, and then if, at the end of the day, if that's what we have to do to solve the problem, yeah, you know, then we could discuss that.
So the pilot would be to eliminate the two-hour parking first?
Well, the pilot program, the pilot program would be to, let me just finish. The pilot program would be to petition your neighbors, come up with a 51% vote to say that you don't want the two-hour parking there. See how that goes. If it's problematic to you, okay, then we would, I would come back here, and again, you know, it's just not, it's not something that, as the Director of Public Safety, I could just change and say, "Okay, this is what we're gonna do." That would be a board vote. To change any ordinance, we need the Board to vote on that and to get that through. So...
I foresee to eliminate the problem with reenacting the two-hour parking by coming up with a petition of 51% towards buying a permit for the fee that towns, larger towns and cities are...
I'm not even, I'm not even concerned with a fee at this point, or anything like that. The thing that concerns me, just like the young lady came up to the mic and said, "Okay, now if you have a permit," you know, and, you know, she has a big family, now you have, you know, 20 people that are coming to a kid's birthday party, or whatever. Now what stops them from getting a ticket there?
Make a phone call.
You know what, it's...
Then you go into 21st century and say, "Plate number such and such called at this particular time, and she hasn't..."
It's not, it's not, let me say this to you, it's not so much of getting into 21st century, you know, the thing is that, well, that stuff takes time and resources on our police department, and, you know, we have 70 police officers here total now. When I first got elected, we only had 60, and sometimes there's only five working at any given time. So, you know, I don't want to go through the whole thing, but you have a domestic violence...
Yeah, but it eliminates a temporary parking permit for the day.
It's a very difficult thing, just to have the police say, "Okay, we're gonna be able to police this issue." Where a permanent solution, if it is to permit parking, if it is lifting the two-hour parking, I think that would better serve people of the streets, and for our police department not to tie men up on just that. You know, because when you think about it, it's not just a problem in the northwest. It's also a problem down on Washington Avenue. You know, there's a lot of spots where commuters are parking and jumping on buses, and, you know, Chief could tell you, we got a lot of complaints all over town, you know, so...
That's why I think it would be a mistake to rescind it.
It would be a mistake to rescind the two-hour parking.
I think it would be a mistake to rescind it. My personal opinion.
Well, listen, listen, you know what, I'm glad you're coming up, because we do need to have this discussion. This way, we could go back as a Board and say, "Okay, this is what the people said, this is what they want," and then we have to react to that. So, I agree. I'm glad you're talking.
Could I add something?
Thank you very much.
Because I was here when we enacted that two-hour parking prohibition, and it was because we were petitioned by the folks who lived on Edison, and Oakley, and Emily, and Laura, and all those smaller blocks there. And the problem at the time was, we had the employees from Hoffman La Roche parking there, and we also had commuters parking there, who were taking the bus going into the city. So the residents came to the Board at the time, and they asked us to do something about it. At the time, Commissioner Recchio was in charge of public safety, came up with a two-hour parking prohibition. Quite frankly, it was, it was supposed to be a temporary solution at the time, which just carried over. Personally, I have a problem, okay, with the stickers, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you why, because any ordinance changes that we make will not only affect your area, but the entire town, okay? What we'd like to do, and again, we don't know how long it's going to take Roche to be redeveloped. We know there's the medical school there, we know that purchasers, Prism, the redevelopment, all right, is going to build out that property. So in the meantime, personally, I don't think it's fair that you have a restriction placed on you because of where you live that the rest of us don't have. I don't have a two-hour parking restriction on my block. I can park there all day long. I can't park overnight, and I'm still in favor of no overnight parking, because I think that becomes a safety issue. But I think what the Director is proposing, all right, is a good first step. I think doing it as a pilot on a block-by-block basis could in fact be beneficial. If we need to go back and tweak it, then so be it. And ultimately, when the Roche property is totally redeveloped, if we need to take another look, all right, because of a problem that may come back, well, then we'll address it at that point. But I think it's important that we do it together. We're not here to just pontificate and tell you what's best for you. I mean, I have a daughter that lives on Emily, all right? I know they're tight blocks. If you have parking on both sides of the street, and you have snow on the street, and we need to get a plow through, sometimes it's difficult. The stickers is, could be a fine solution for your area, but when we make that application town-wide, it may not be ideal. And I can see some other issues that could come into play for us. Again, it's something for you to consider. I think the reason he's proposing 51% of the folks on a block, you know, being in favor of lifting the parking prohibition, is because we want to satisfy as many people as possible. We're not here to punish anyone, or to tell you, you know, how to live your life and where to park your car, other than overnight.
Anthony Verselli, 78 Edison. So, just to expand on your point, I know a lot of the neighbors from Edison came to you guys, or whoever was here at the time.
Sent us emails and texts, and we forwarded them over to Commissioner Petracco.
At the time, they came, and they instituted the two-hour parking, and Edison experienced the problem that we're having right now then, and they came and wanted parking permits then, and they were told no. So now we're back to this point, and now we're talking about removing the two-hour parking and then bringing it back, which will then be back in the same problem that we're at right now.
I'm not saying we're going to bring it back. What I said was that, once the development is...
We'll look at it.
...completed, we need to revisit it and take a look, and see what works best for everyone.
So, we're talking about a pilot program. We've already, like, if you can have a pilot program of stickers for Edison Ave, if we have a consensus on the block, we already have a pilot program for this two-hour parking...
Right, and again, the stickers would work for your area, but that application town-wide is not, is not ideal.
Doesn't have to be town-wide. We're talking about a pilot program for Edison Avenue, where we just have stickers for a program that was instituted for Edison Avenue and other neighbors over here. Why not just, we've been down this road...
Well, let me ask you a question. What happens to that young lady's problem in the back, when she has a party and her family's there?
Most people have parties on Saturdays and Sundays, right?
What if it's not?
Two-hour parking is not instituted on Sundays, so that solves that, and then Saturday, you can just rescind it. I don't think anybody here has a problem on Saturday. It's Monday through Friday.
Yeah, but if it's something that we have to enforce, it'll be enforced. But I'm just saying, it's like, you know, like Commissioner Tucci is saying, "We're here to listen tonight, and then we're gonna go back," because that... here to listen tonight and then we're going to go back because that, that would take a board vote to get that passed. But I'm, I have to tell you myself, I'm a fan of baby steps because when you jump into things, you know, like Commissioner Tucci's saying, that might be good for Edison Avenue, if it's not good for the other side of town and it leads to other things and other issues, you know, and loo- look, just, let, 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 let me just-
But if we take a baby step, we need to walk now. We've already had the two-hour parking and we had this issue where we wanted, people on the block wanted parking permits and they were told no then. Now we're talking about removing the two-hour parking and then revisiting it down the road for two-hour parking and then we'll be back to square one.
Well, what's the problem with removing the two-hour parking? What do you think the issue is going to be with that?
We want the two-hour parking.
Why?
In case people come or there's commuters-
Who's coming, who's, who's-
There's commuters, there's a bus stop on the corner.
I mean-
We have a bus, we have a New Jersey Transit stop right there on the corner of Kingsland and Edison.
Has it been an issue now? I mean, are they still parking there?
We're not having a problem with that, but we would like it. They will do it.
I understand.
We're just asking for a parking permit for our homes on Edison. Now, do we waste our time? Because I don't think anybody's interested in consensus of removing the two-hour parking. Can we have a consensus? If we come to the board with a full one-hundred percent consensus from Edison Ave, can we do a pilot program for just stickers?
I, I don't think anything's a waste of time. I think it's good to communicate. And I know that this is a hot topic and I'm willing to like get right on this. I don't want to wait because I could see that people are frustrated. So I think when you're communicating, nothing's a waste of time. I think that's something that we have to, that would be something that we have to vote on, correct?
Certainly would have to vote on it. You know, and discussing it back, you know, certainly would like to reach over a shorter period of time than, you know, the short time we were back there today. And I'll tell you, one of my concerns with any kind of, you know, taking away restriction parking, permit parking, I see it sometimes as a slippery slope, especially of our overnight parking, because sooner or later, someone's going to come to us and say, well, listen, you know, you, you guys gave permit parking to, to people where they have two-hour parking, why don't we have permit parking for overnight? You know, everybody knows that the residence there, why can't we park on the street overnight? And it just becomes a slippery slope. And I think that, I know I am, I'm, the rest of the Commissioners, but if we ever got rid of the overnight parking, it's not going to be good for this town from a safety point of view or from a snowplowing point of view. And, and I do see it being an issue where we're going to get petitioned again for that.
Don't think anybody would support overnight parking?
Brian, I, I spoke with Brian and I spoke with every single person on my block, and that was the number one thing that we support.
Well, let me say this to you, one night come down to, one night come down to the police department, and the Chief could assure you, all the phone calls we get about this overnight-
A phone call for a visitor, I mean, we can only fit two cars in our driveway, that's a different story.
No, but it's not, it's, there's a lot of, how many phone calls do we get a night, Chief?
There are, you know, there's both sides to it.
But it's not unique to Nutley.
Can you just let us, when you're, when we're talking, can you, just one favor, when we're talking, we'll, we'll give you your chance, just let the Chief answer the question. Go ahead.
Again, like the Director said, there's, there's, there's residents that are on both sides of the issue. I have residents that come down in the, from, from your area and want no cars on the street. They don't care about, they don't want residents either. So, i- it's a mixed kind of review, you know, there's some people that want parking, some don't. So, right now, we don't know the feel for what the consensus is in the area. For as many people that are here tonight, I have people that call and say, I don't want, you know, why is anybody allowed to park on the street? Is it two-hour parking? So, and that was the original consensus. So now maybe that's changed, the circumstances have changed since Roche is gone. So, I, I think the best alternative is to just remove it if that's what you guys want and then see how that works out and then readdress it if you need to.
I just want to apologize, I didn't mean to talk over you.
No, that's fine, that's fine. You're passionate, that's good.
So if we canvass the whole block, seventy Edison Avenue, or write a letter stating option A, rescind the, rescind the two-hour parking to get fifty-one percent, and seventy-five percent say, no, we want the two-hour parking with permits, that eliminates the banner in back of the parking.
I think, I, I think, I think, let, let me say this to you, to Paul, right?
Yeah, I'm Paul.
Yeah, okay. I happen to be in favor of the stickers, to be honest with you, you know, but again, I can't do that by myself here.
Correct.
Because, you know, we have to, we have to vote on things.
I think, I think what the Commissioners are trying to do is look at a system that will be simplest for the whole town and that will be easiest, less drain on the police department and also solve some of the issues that'll affect the whole two-hour zone because there's a lot of streets other than just Edison and Oakley town-wide that have the parking restriction. So to just do something that will, like Commissioner Tucci said, help Edison, it may now make it harder in the other areas, so-
Is there any other areas in Nutley that have a two-hour parking?
Yeah, there's plenty of areas.
Well, is it the whole town?
No.
Not the whole town, but there's many different areas.
Okay, so now we already have a situation established where there's two-hour parking in only certain areas of the town. Now, Morrow, I think you stated that it was a pilot program at one point that nobody ever got back to making it a permanent solution. So now, we can make it a permanent solution by, we'll go past Edison, we'll go to Oakley, we'll go to the other areas in our, in our corner of Nutley and say, do we want to rescind it or do we want permit parking? And I don't think that's going to jeopardize overnight because everybody in this room, I agree with the overnight parking, I don't want it on my street either. I think it makes us all safer.
But we want it, we want to hear what you have to say and we want it, we want to take the temperature of everyone and see exactly what they want. So if you wanted to do it that way and submit that to the Board, obviously, we can consider all the options, but just at the end of the day, all right, we want to resolve your issues, but we don't want to resolve an issue in one area and create an issue.
But when you're talking about strictly-
And that's, that's our, that's our concern.
Two-hour parking, it's only going to be maybe two or three blocks, maybe a couple hundred feet from areas where there's bus stops or Hoffmann La Roche. Somebody in the middle of town is not really going to care, they're not going to worry about a commuter parking on their street or from a, a major place like Hoffmann La Roche. So it's really not an issue for the whole town. That's the way I see it. Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's more than a couple streets though, right?
Yeah.
There's several streets.
Mike Garner, seventy-two Plymouth Road, just want to throw in, I work for, I'm a police officer and I work in Rutherford. And we instituted the permit parking, it is a, it's a huge undertaking. I don't work in the Traffic Bureau, so I don't know all the details, but I know it started off on the east side of town where there's a, a bus route that goes right into the city. Everybody was parking their car there, leaving in front of people's houses. So the people on that side of town, certain streets, they came in, they wanted the parking permits. They did institute it, they passed the ordinance, then other streets wanted the parking permit. They had to expand it on the east side. Then the people on the west side of town said, well, I live in town and I always, I drive from the west side, I park my car on the east side, I pay taxes, it's a public street, I want a permit because I'm a Rutherford resident. So there are, it does slippery slope. So it's, it is something that you need to do your homework on, call surrounding towns that have instituted it because they're, and I, I feel the pain of the Edison people. I used to be a police officer here, I used to enforce those two-hour parking when Hoff La Roche, and I used to cross the people. I know people from around the town parked there, we crossed them into work, they left to quiet their whole day, so, but the homework, the homework has to be done on it.
So do you think, Michael, do you think it's been a positive thing in Rutherford when they instituted or has it had many issues? I mean, if, in your opinion, if they were to do it all over again, would you be a yes or a no for it?
I don't even want to give my opinion on that. Maybe Chief Strumel could call my chief or his Traffic Bureau, call my Traffic Bureau because they're the ones that had to put up, it's headaches, it's a lot of work.
The drain on your resources, I'm sure.
It was a drain on the people too, coming in and with the registration or assurance to match it up, fill out the application, we do the visitor ones too. I don't know how the program works, but I've been there at the window, the people at the desk taking the paperwork in, Traffic Bureau committing tons of time to it, but-
That's why I think it's important that we try to find something that is simple to, to fix the situation, but the least drain on the police department and also, again, what the residents want in the area.
Come up.
Sunny Landry, one-three-five Lakeside. I have a process question. Three times Commissioner Pacheco said, the Commissioners and I discussed this in the back room, we were talking about this in the back room, what we looked at in the back room. The back room meeting from seven-thirty until over an hour was for the purpose of executive session to discuss, as I think Mr. Janet Opo opened the executive session, for contracts and litigation. So my question is, are there any contract issues or litigation issues surrounding the parking on these two streets where these residents are that gave this Board of Commissioners the right to discuss this issue behind closed doors in executive session? And I would like to know what that litigation is and what that contract is.
Landry, the, that was not the entire discussion in the back room, by the way.
Was part of the discussion during closed session dealing with contracts or litigations related to this issue?
Partly, yes, but we have other issues of contracting and litigation that we discussed as part of the, as part of our executive session. This is, in my mind, multiple issues. We don't have to limit ourselves to what, just the contract. When the minutes come out, they will reflect what was discussed in the back room unless they're confidential. Some of these issues do touch on legal issues and we are allowed to discuss those in executive session when I am giving legal advice, which is confidential. So I disagree with your, your, your interpretation.
The question.
Well, I disagree with your interpretation of what we can and can't do in executive session, we are within the rules. And the Commissioners have expressed publicly some of the things that were discussed only because those things may not be confidential. But we did discuss other things that are absolutely confidential issues.
Oh, no, I don't have an issue with those. I know that you talked about contracts.
You can talk about contract, budget.
But I'm saying the conversa- the conversation that dealt with the parking issue, was there anything during the parking conversation that dealt with a contract or litigation? Yes or no?
I'm not going to discuss in public what was discussed in executive.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
As you do, you'll get the, you'll get the minutes and we can have that discussion.
Back had a question.
Frank Gibbons, sixty-five Edison Avenue. Until this is resolved, can we be granted a grace period? But we don't know where we stand right now.
Now, well, first of all, what, what I'd like to say to summarize this a little bit is that I think it is a good idea that if you get something on paper as far as a petition with the stickers or with the two-hour parking being resolved or waived, if you can get that to me, then I think that we could, I'll forward that to all of the Commissioners and we could start, you know, figuring out what we're going to, how we're going to solve this problem. Chief, do you have anything in your, your toolkit that we can help our residents out with for the time being?
Well, again, like the Director said, if, if the Board is going to move to make an ordinance change during that time period, I could suspend it, the enforcement, if it is going to be an ordinance change. So once we determine, if the Board determines they are going to make a change, I, I could certainly, you know, do a temporary suspension. Well, again, until, until, until we're moving forward with, with an ordinance, you're going to-
Mayor, if I might, I think the Board has concluded that we are going to make a change. What that change is, is what we're undecided about. So, I would be personally in favor of giving these folks some relief and letting them park in the meantime.
Again, if you are going to make it-
As long as that's, that's legal and it's something you can do under your authority.
Absolutely, within, if it's within the authority you have, I would support that.
Okay, all right. If the Board is definitely going to make, consider changes to the ordinance, I could do a temporary suspension until they, they come up with a new ordinance, that's something.
Chief, you have the, the Chief has a discretion to enforce or not enforce those at his own discretion. Chief, just, you might want to answer the question, why those people were ticketed in those particular areas. I think you mentioned to me that there were complaints made by residents, correct?
Yes, again, and enforcement of, of two-hour parking is not a priority when it comes to policing the town. It's kind of done on, on a periodic basis, it's also done on a complaint basis. So the reason why some residents hadn't gotten tickets in a year or two was, again, it's not at the top of our priority when it comes to things. It was either a response to a complaint from another resident or, again, just the periodic enforcement. Some residents I've talked to said, I've been parking out there every day for the last year and haven't gotten anything. So that explains why, you know, if we were doing it every day and it was a priority, you would have got a ticket every day. So, but we do have to respond to residents that complain and follow the ordinances that we have in place and currently, that's the ordinance. So, that's why you had, you got summons and, you know, you hadn't gotten one for a while.
Would it be all right for me to write the petition and submit it to the people?
Absolutely.
Well, this, and, and the only thing we're going to need is the signatures from-
Right.
-the people on your block and if there's any other blocks there. And I, I think it's a good first step and I think that as of tomorrow, we could suspend the parking regulations there, I mean, we're, so-
Temporary until an ordinance is-
We'll do that until we meet again, but, you know, let's get on this and this way we could get on it here and solve this problem once and for all. If you want to speak, you have to come to the mic.
Right, thank you.
Yep. And thank you, Mr. Gibbons, for being so patient.
I just want to mention that the whole purpose about the parking-
Ma'am, please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Maria Cato, eighty-one Oakley Terrace. I just want to remind myself and remind you guys that the whole purpose, I'm sure, of why they put the two-hour parking there was to protect the homeowners' spots so that the commuters are not taking it, so La Roche is not taking it. It's not to ticket the homeowners. So that's the whole purpose behind here, is the homeowner should not be penalized for whatever the decision is going forward. Like any place else in town, you should be able to park your car, go do your errands, do whatever you have to do, but the homeowner shouldn't pay. I think the two hours should stay there.
Well, that, that's what we're going to-
Should stay there, but the solution should be somehow or another that a list gets put up by neighborhood, whatever the affected area is, with, with license plates and say, these are all Oakley Terrace. If you're on here, you shouldn't get ticketed. And that's as simple as that.
You're saying, you're saying from moving forward tomorrow until we solve this?
Yeah. Because you know what? Dana's correct, she's my neighbor over there and she's the one that brought up. We have big Italian families. We're constantly, twenty people are there, fifteen people are there. And you know what? On Oakley Terrace, we have a very good rapport with all of our neighbors, so nobody would be calling, complaining, saying, hey. The only time you would get that phone call is if truly somebody that does not belong there is on the street. But if it's anybody else in the neighborhood, we don't call to complain. So the day that I got ticketed, my, my other neighbor got ticketed the same day. And it just doesn't make any sense. It, it had to be something that happened elsewhere.
I think, I think that if we start doing, you know, going through this and we're going to have, we're not going to have the parking there, it's going to be for the residents, we've lived this, with this for the last twenty years that I know of. I mean, can we, I think we have to agree to this, suspend it for now, let us do our homework and let's get to some type of resolve. But I think if we're going to let the residents park there and not the other people, I would say that if it becomes a problem, like immediately, that all of a sudden, I mean, I, I think that what we should do is just leave the signs up and just not enforce it there.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then give us a chance, but to-
That's fine.
That, you could agree with that?
That's perfect, yeah. I just, like I said, you know, if the signs are up there, it's going to deter anybody that's going to jump on the bus and say, you know what, let me go park my car over there.
But just know that if, if, if you or someone else calls us, calls the police station and say, well, this guy's in front of my house for five hours, now I want to move, we are not going to be able to enforce that.
No, correct, but if there is a, if there's a license plate system, something that's created that you're able to look up the plate and say, okay, this guy belongs on Oakley that you're able to look up the plate and say, "Okay, this guy belongs on Oakley Terrace."
I'm gonna, we'll look into every detail for you, but I have to tell you, I think that one's gonna be a tough one, because, only because of the resources that we have. You know, not to get into it, if we get a domestic violence complaint, it ties up two of our five officers that are on the road for four hours, two of them. So, the laws have changed, you know, we don't wanna be absent-minded to the crimes, the house burglaries, or whatever else, because of, you know, just the parking thing, so-
Well, I understand.
What we try to do is, we try to strike a balance, and we try to prioritize in the police department from highest risk down there. But we're so happy that you guys came out tonight, and I'm really looking forward to working with all of you to some kind of resolve, and thank you for being patient.
Gotta come to the mic.
You have to come to the mic.
Mike.
I didn't get your name, I'm sorry, officer?
Chief Strumel.
Okay, if you come down the street, and you're doing your two-hour sweep, right? And you see, wouldn't it be much easier to see a sticker and say, "I don't have to worry about that anymore"? You're gonna come back two hours later, it's gonna be a waste of your time, and a waste of resources for people who have a permit on their car. I just wanted to state that, thank you.
Good evening. Alice Mahanat, 76 Oakley Terrace. I'm here in support of the neighbors that, for some reason, it happens to be all homeowners that got all these stickers, which is, I mean, feels like a big coincidence, but we never get all these stickers, that's why we're here. I don't know what happened, but, like I, as a neighbor, I know all the cars by block. If I ever see a car that doesn't belong, my wife or myself, we call the police, because we care about our block. If we see a car that's being there, we call, we don't wait for the people come to patrol, we don't wait for that. Because, you know, we have kids, if I see people that are driving too fast, I call. One time, I was on my way to work, and so a police officer came, pulled me over, and I say, "You know what? They're really, they're really driving so fast." He said, "It was on-"
Bloomfield there?
No, the one, the one that meets with Bloomfield.
Kingsland?
Kingsland, they'll come flying, and then they probably, they did something about it, they put one of those, uh, speech-
Yeah, we really encourage you, and that, we can't say that enough, how many times?
So, I wanna say that I'm, I, it's just the only reason we're here, because it's like, with the rest of it, we got the tickets. But we very, I'm very happy with the police department, and every time I call, and every time I see something that's strange in the neighborhood, we call, and they say, unfortunately, like, it's not an easy fix, and it, it looked very simple before I got here, and now you're talking like, the permit is gonna, you know, when you have a party, it's not gonna be easy. Like, this happened, this is something that happened in Belleville. We had, we happened to have a barbecue, and the one side of the street, there has no parking, and the other one has the parking sign, and those, everybody got a ticket. And, and it happens, three of the people that were there, there were police officers from the town, and the guy thought, like, he said, "Oh, you just ticketed everybody, like, how do you do that?" And, and they were like, it was shameful, a little bit shameful, like, all this happened, but, but I hope, you know-
Well, continue to call the police department, if you see anything that's suspicious, that's a great job.
We always do.
And we encourage all residents to do that, so thank you so much.
You don't have to wait anybody, and the thing is, some people like babysit, you know, we know that car, I know those cars.
Right.
Like, you know, when, I almost checking, and we all are doing the same thing.
Thank you.
This car doesn't belong here.
Thank you, that's great, thank you, thank you for coming.
Anybody else wanna address the Board of Commissioners on this item? Go write the public comment on agenda items only. Anybody wanna address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Being done, let's go to, and anybody that wants to leave is welcome to leave. Go to Communications.
See you later.
Madam Clerk, you can wait a couple seconds. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have, the Knights of Columbus has submitted an application for a social affair permit to have an event to be held on Saturday, March 4th, 2017, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. On their premises at 150 Chestnut Street. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Southside Grill has also submitted an application for an extension of premises for an event to be held on Saturday, March 4th, 2017, from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for Communications, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I have reports, various reports for December and November 2016. Move to, um, we're gonna, oh, bills.
Bills.
Pay the bills. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, Public Affairs, $92,131,074. Revenue and Finance, $2,594,633.55. Public Safety, $231,935.2. Public Works, $48,588.7. Parks and Public Property, $144,645.40. Total payroll, $788,647.48, for a grand total of $3,905,81.26.
Move the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills.
Ordinance number 332, for introduction, has been pulled. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program provides loans and/or grants to municipal and county governments, and grants to nonprofit organizations for assistance in the acquisition, development, and stewardship of lands for outdoor recreation and conservation purposes. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining funding in the amount of approximately $262,584, in the form of an amended application in the amount of a 75% matching grant, and if available, a 25% loan of approximately $87,528 from the state to fund the following project, Township of Nutley Field Turf for Soccer Field at Father Glotzback Park, at an approximate cost of $350,112. Whereas the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley resolves that Commissioner Morrow Tucci, Director of Department of Parks and Public Property, is hereby authorized to: A. Make an amended application for such a loan and/or grant; B. Provide additional application information, furnish such documents as may be required; and C. Act as the authorized correspondent of the above-named applicant. Whereas the state shall determine if the amended application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the Green Acres Program, and notify the applicant of the amount of the funding award. And whereas the applicant is willing to use the state's funds in accordance with such rules, regulations, and applicable statutes, and is willing to enter into an agreement with the state for the above-named project. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex, State, and New Jersey, that: 1. Commissioner Tucci is hereby authorized to execute an agreement and any amendment there; 2. With the state known as Township of Nutley Field Turf for Soccer Field at Father Glotzback Park; 3. That the applicant has its matching share of the project, if a match is required, in the amount of $87,528; 4. That in the event the state's funds are less than the total project cost specified above, the applicant has the balance of funding necessary to complete the project; 5. That the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in its performance of the project; and 6. That this resolution shall take effect immediately. This is an amendment to a resolution we passed at our last meeting, because conditions changed, and we are now eligible for 75% of this project cost in a grant, and 25% in a loan, as opposed to what it was just a couple of weeks ago, where we were only eligible for 25% of the project cost in a grant, and we would have had to pick up the 75%. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas tax sale certificate 201101 issued to 31 Kensal Avenue, Block 101, Lot 4, was redeemed April 20th, 2012. Whereas the Tax Collector's Office received payment for redemption of said certificate again on January 24th, 2017, by Caliber Home Loans in Error. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, that the treasurer, B., and she is hereby authorized to issue a refund in the amount of $467.90 to Caliber Home Loans for the redemption of his tax sale certificate, 201101, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracco?
Yes, Mayor. I got it. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex, State, and New Jersey, that Patricia Dominic, an employee in the Department of Public Safety, is be granted medical leave of absence without pay effective September 13th, 2016, through June 26th, 2017, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State, and New Jersey, that the township treasurer, B., and she is hereby authorized to refund $5,000 to Stanziel Construction PO Box 2597, Bloomfield, New Jersey, for the road opening permit for the water and sewer fee for the property located at 12 Highland Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, Rotary Club of Nutley, license number 12D17, On-Premise 50/50 Cash Raffle, to be held Saturday, April 1st, 2017. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the licenses. Resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. If there anyone here who would like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Mayor, before you go on to that, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record that the streets that will be suspended, as far as enforcement with the two-hour parking, is Oakley Terrace and Edison Avenue, just to be clear.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any Commissioner announcements? Being done, could I have a motion to adjourn? Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Good night, everybody.
And the time is 9:26.